Afternoon, everyone. Happy rainy cold Tuesday. I think this is the coldest Tuesday that we have had for a hot minute. For yeah, it's it's really lovely to have some rain, so I welcome it. Thank you all for tuning in to K four C O radio. For those of you that are listening on the app, thank you so much for listening. We have an amazing interview, so appreciate you tuning in to your midday Tuesday. And for those of you that want to see our beautiful faces, I highly recommend you do so because you we have a gorgeous person in studio today. So definitely tune in on social media. We are live on Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn and YouTube. And we very much welcome any respectful comments and questions that you have because we love engaging with our community. Before we go, I wanted to make sure that this is read. So K four C O radio interviews candidates who hold or aspire to hold elected positions. K four C O radio does not endorse no nor contribute to any political candidates or political parties. We welcome our audience to ask any questions in the comment section. Any questions or statements with the purpose to attack, insult, or berate any person or group of people will be deleted. So we highly recommend people getting involved, but please be kind. We love everyone that comes in here. We welcome voices, so definitely be there. So without further ado, this is a very special friend of mine on a personal note. I've gotten to know this lovely woman. I have Christine Sweetland in here, who is running for the mayor of the city of Centennial.
I know. I'm so glad to see you and to be here. So thank you for having me.
Of course. I know. I was trying to think how far back I've actually known you. I think it's it's been several years now. And I've loved our conversations. You're so involved in community. And I do, I see you at ribbon cuttings and events and chambers and just you're all over the place.
I try to be.
I mean, it's amazing. And it's a full time job sometimes just to be out in the public all the time.
Right. Yeah, but it's fun because this is why I love doing it, right? Is getting to meet people, hearing their stories, you know, getting to see new things that are happening in our city that I wouldn't know about unless I went to those things. So I love doing it.
Completely. I totally agree. Being an outsider looking in, I get to really learn about my state. And especially, I mean, we at K four C O radio, we are studios here in Centennial. We live in Centennial, so I mean, it's good to know because we work, our kids go to school here. It's where we live, so.
I am. You're wearing Centennial blue today.
Love that I did that on purpose. I wish I was that coordinated for a rainy Tuesday. I was so not. But maybe you were on my mind. I'm like, I need a Centennial blue today. Speaking of blue, for those of you that have your computer or your phone in front of you, go to Sweetland for Centennial. And it's spelled out F O R centennial dot com. And you can find out more about her, all the issues, endorsements, how she's in the community and more. So again, it's Sweetland for Centennial dot com. And we'll go a little bit. We're going to unpack, of course, the race. There's so much to unravel because it's coming up really soon. The end is so near. My goodness, I bet. I mean, it's like the fourth quarter. You know, it's just, it's right there.
It it makes me nervous to think about all the things we still need to do, like the 20,000 doors we still need to knock. But I've been doing this for so long that it's like, okay, we're almost at the end, right? You can you can do anything for the next forty some odd days.
Right, exactly. So for those of you, I want to kind of start at the beginning, if that's okay. To like, where are you from? And you've been involved in city council for a long time. So why don't you start kind of where you're from and how you got involved in politics?
Okay, sure. So I grew up here in Denver. We moved when I was in second grade. And according to the Colorado History Museum, if you had no say in moving to Colorado, then you can claim to be a native. So when you're seven years old, you have no say. So I'm claiming to be a native. The Colorado History Museum says that I can. So grew up here. We lived in southeast Denver, you know, right on the High Line Canal. I always say we rode our bikes either to Bible Park to play tennis or to Cook Park to go swimming. So it was just, it was great, right? Loved living here. I and I was the only one that stayed. I have two sisters. One went to the the west coast and one went to the east coast. So my parents were here. So and then, you know, I was, I started working, went to school. And started in telecommunications, did that for fifteen years. I started at Cellular One, which became AT and T Wireless. So back in the day, the big brick phones, that was one of the benefits we got is that we could carry around a cellphone. So when you're twenty, in your twenties, carrying around a cellphone, that was really exciting.
It didn't fit in your pocket back in those days.
It did not. No.
I do remember those. They were bulky, very cool, though.
Right, right.
First time, you know, especially in the car. You have this big honking thing. Oh, yeah.
My sister is five years younger than me and she remembers that I let her use my car for like homecoming or prom because my cellphone was in my car and she just thought I was the coolest sister because of that, which I don't even remember. But I'm like, okay, I'll take it. So, you know, worked and then I was saying to you earlier, today is my twenty fifth wedding anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you very much. So my husband and I, he will tell a different story, but the story that is fit for radio. My husband's British.
We're not regulated by the FCC. You can get as crazy or as not crazy as you would like.
Yeah. So my husband is is British. And so the team that he's he follows is Darby County. And they came and played the US national team at Mile High Stadium. And him and his buddy had never been to the US and they're like, let's follow our team. Let's go. Let's go check it out. So they came to Denver and then they went on to Chicago. And so we met when they were playing here and I like to say that we met at the game and he might tell you where we we actually met at the bar after, but that's okay. And so we spent some time together while he was here and then he moved back, he went back to to England. And so we had like a long distance romance, right, where there wasn't texting. So it was emails back and forth and phone calls. And I went to visit him in October, spent two weeks out there, never been to England. We also went to Scotland. And at the end of that trip, he asked me to marry him. And then in February, I was going back out just to visit him and a friend said, well, because we were looking at fiance visas and he and they said, if you get married there, then you're then it's a lot easier for him to get the immigration paperwork. So we actually got married after we saw each other face to face eighteen days. And now twenty five years later, but our church wedding was September twenty fourth.
That is amazing.
I know, right? So I I joke that we were the original ninety day fiance.
You must know the secret sauce. I mean, what has kept you together for twenty five years?
You know, here's the thing is we were both a little bit older, right, when we got married. And I was, he was just turning thirty. He's, no, I guess he wasn't even thirty yet. And I was in my early thirties, but we truly are good partners, right? We really lift each other up. We work well together. And we just, you know, we just understand that it takes both of us working in tandem in order to make things happen, right? So he is truly my biggest cheerleader. And I think that if you're sitting next to Andy Sweetland at any dinner party, you have the best seat in the house. Because he is funny, he is sarcastic and yeah, he's just amazing. So, yeah. So I'm, we've, you know, twenty five years, you go through ups and downs. Both of our, both sets of our parents have passed away. That's been really hard, you know, raising kids, trying to get everything. I started my own business. He was very supportive of that. So, you know, it's been fun. It's been really fun.
Well, fast forward a little. That's amazing. You sound so just in love and like you're still on the honeymoon ride. If you say of the best seat in the house, I mean, man, you just beam. Andy, I hope you're watching this because my goodness.
I know. We are not like the mushy people. We're not that at all. So he's probably really embarrassed if he's watching this right now.
Well, it's important, you know, the family values, at least that that's an important thing to me. So, okay, so you started your own business. And were you involved in politics? I'm kind of curious.
No desire to be in politics whatsoever. I have always been active in the community. I have always volunteered in the community. Even before I got married and had kids, you know, I volunteered at different things. And then once we had the kids and the neighborhood that we live in, you know, I was very involved in their schools and their sports teams. I was the Neighborhood Association President. So just really wanting to do what I could to make our community better, right? And and so then, as my boys got older, they just don't need you as much, right? They're driving, one was in college, the other in high school, and they just don't need you. And and I thought, well, what else can I do to give back to the community, maybe in a bigger way? And somebody suggested that I look at running for city council. And really, I have been serving on city council for six years. I'm honored to do it. It truly is the best job in the world. Like, I really enjoy working with people, getting to meet people. And just hearing, like, we just live in a really great city, so that makes it so much easier, too. You know, we were just US News and World Reports, just ranked Centennial the best place to live in Colorado. And so, yeah, I just love doing it. Yeah.
So you've been on for six years and you are District Two.
District Two.
Okay, does that have, I know Centennial to me is kind of funky.
I should have brought the map.
Really long and squinchy. Because it goes all the way, obviously, to Centennial Airport and then even further.
It goes to almost E four seventy to the east. Broadway to the west. So it's very long. And then really thin in between. And then you go through different cities in between there as well. But so District Two is basically University, Dry Creek to Arapahoe until you get to Colorado Boulevard, then it goes to Orchard, all the way to Quebec. And then there's a little squiggle over by the the Safeway.
It is so, it is, I mean, I'm a native as well. And I never know what city I'm in, to be totally fair. I usually, because it used to be Fort Collins, Denver Springs. And now, you know, Denver, they have all these different cities and even like my postal, you know, code is, I don't know. Am I in Greenwood Village? Am I in Centennial? I don't know. Am I in Denver? Am I in Inglewood? So thank you for explaining that, especially those that are like, please vote, get out there, have an opinion, have a voice. Those of you that live in Colorado, anywhere, please have a voice.
Right. Well, and you'll see, like, the street signs, so Centennial has blue street signs, so that's how you know you're in Centennial. Which is really great. But right where you guys are, this side of the street is Centennial, the other side of the street is Greenwood Village. So you'll see blue and green street signs. So that's, that's the way to 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 know where you are.
Blue is Centennial. Thank you. I also never knew that.
Yeah. And so I would just say sixty percent of our sales tax or sixty percent of our revenues come from sales tax. So spend your money where the blue signs are.
Blue signs. I love it. Well, we we at K four C O definitely, we support small to medium sized businesses. Why is the city of Centennial to you important? Either as a mom, a business owner, while you're running.
Right. You know, well, I mean, because we are, you know, the number one city to live in. But when my husband and I, when Andy and I were looking at where we wanted to raise our kids, the house that we found in Centennial, it felt like the neighborhood that we grew up in, right? The mature landscaping, great parks, trail systems. We did not know at the time, but Centennial has two of the best school districts in Colorado with Cherry Creek and Littleton Public Schools. So that was an added bonus that we didn't even know about. And so I just think that people really, there's a sense of community here. People want to be here and it's so fun to see how many people grew up in Centennial that are now raising their kids. We have somebody just down the street from us. He grew, he's in the same neighborhood he grew up in because he's like, this is the great place. And it's that sense of community. Centennial was founded with a grassroots effort. So people are very invested in the city and I just think it shines through.
Oh, I totally agree. Community. I love the community aspect of it, too. Well, so I wanted to focus a little bit, and we can go in any direction that you want. But I think there are some things that that you really highlight, at least for who you are. So and what you're involved in, too. I wanted to touch on that first. So you're a member of Centennial Housing Working Group, correct? Centennial Audit and Budget Committees and Littleton Public Schools Foundation. So you're, back to how we started, you have been very involved in the community on a personal level. It's so interesting that you said politics kind of never were there. But that's for me, what politics are, is being involved and caring about your city. So maybe that was something kind of in the back already. Kind of a predisposed notion.
Right. I maybe, I mean, I guess being on your Neighborhood Association Board, if you think about it, that is like a small political group, if you will. And so, yeah, I I guess you're right, right? That it's it's making sure that your community is better and and definitely at the local level, right? At these municipal level, that's what we're talking about. There, there's no aisles that we're crossing. We're all just sitting next to each other, trying to do what's best for Centennial. And that's what I really love about it is we might come with different backgrounds and different perspectives. But we all need to come together and go, okay, what what is truly best for our city?
Completely. No, it's, yeah, it's, I have this this conversation almost daily now to not be polarized, right? To come in and have a respectful conversation, whatever side of the aisle you're on. Is come at this with love, respect, consideration, compassion. And truly, it's a conversation, not a confrontational moment. So and I totally agree. I'm curious, so in District Two and just on city council, what are your current roles being on city council? And how would that go towards becoming?
Being mayor. So when you're, when you're on city council, the mayor does appoint you to different commit committees and and boards that to participate in. So a few years ago, I was the city council rep for South Metro Chamber Board and now Mike Sutherland is. Currently, the boards that I serve on include SEMSA, which is the stormwater board, which on a day like today, when it's raining, stormwater is very important. And making sure that new developments know how to get rid of stormwater as quickly as they can. But so that's been fascinating. That's a board, I always say, I need to bring an eighth grade science book in when I sit on those board meetings. Because they're like talking about streams and reaches and they and I'm like, okay. So on that one, I'm also on the High Line Canal Collaborative. And you probably, I don't know if you know this, but Denver Water started the High Line Canal and they used to bring water through the High Line Canal. That's how people got their water and then they figured out better ways to do it. But they still had a couple of people that got their water that way. And so the High Line Canal Conservancy took it, kind of worked with Denver Water and said, how do we have this great amenity of seventy one miles through our city, through the entire metro area? How do we maintain it going forward? And so the wonderful work at the Conservancy, Arapahoe County just recently purchased their miles from Denver Water. And then Douglas County is working on that and Denver's working on that. And Arapahoe County is take, is managing the Adams County part of it. So this way now it has a conservation easement, so it will be a recreational amenity for years to come. Because Denver Water could have easily sold it to the highest bidder and done something. But for those of us who love the High Line Canal and appreciate it, I'm so glad that Arapahoe County is, you know, taking over the the majority of it. So working on that, on that working group is really like, what does this look like going forward? It it's been like this for a hundred and some odd years and now Arapahoe County has owned it for a year. There's going to be some growing pains with that, of course, but how can we all work together? Cherry Hills Village, Greenwood Village, Littleton, Centennial, obviously. How can we all work together to make sure that the High Line Canal and Aurora, you know, works for everybody, right? And is it is it a wonderful amenity? So I love being on that board. And let's see, what other ones do I serve on? I work with South Suburban Parks and Rec. They just got a new director, so I'm excited to meet him and see what he will do on that. And I'm sure there's others that I just can't think of right now. But it's nice, it's fun to be a part of it, you know, to 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 learn new things. And so every year we get to be on different boards. National League of Cities, I'm on the Women in in Municipal Government Board. So it's kind of fun to hear what other city leaders are doing. And then the Littleton Public School Foundation Board, that's really outside of council. But my kids got such an amazing education at Littleton Public Schools. And now, since they both have graduated, the foundation raises money so that teachers and and students can can do things that that their budgets just can't afford for them to do. So if I can give back in that way, I'm I'm all in. So I've been on that board. This is now my second year and I just love it. It's a great board to be on.
Wow, I didn't know a lot of that, actually. That's amazing. That's why truly I love being educated. I mean, because I know the High Line Canal. I mean, I ran on that since I was a little kiddo and, you know, I don't know the history of it. And, you know, I think it's amazing to find out about the city of Centennial and Arapahoe County. I just read that Arapahoe County is older than the state of Colorado. Which I never knew until I started investigating, like, what's going on in this political atmosphere here? That how can a county be older than Colorado?
I know. It's crazy, isn't it?
Here we are. You know, we were part of, I think, Kansas Territory beforehand, if memory serves right. But so, you know, hopefully some of that will stick in there. So you spent six years and that's interesting. So your your boards can kind of change and responsibilities change. It sounds like every year.
Oh, and the biggest one, so I'm also on Dr. Cog, which is the Denver Regional Council of Governments. And Tammy Mauer currently serves as the main person. I'm the alternate. Tammy is term limited this year and she has a transportation background. So Dr. Cog is basically the way that we get our transportation grant dollars, right? So that board is anybody from Boulder out to Georgetown all the way down to Castle Pines, Castle Rock, Parker. And so everybody meets together to determine which transportation projects we're going to work on. And everybody has an equal voice in that room. And so while Tammy is the main person, I'm the alternate. So I've been listening into those meetings so that I can step on in. But that's a big, important role, just because that's a lot of infrastructure money coming into our cities. And making sure that, and Tammy's done a great job in making sure Centennial gets a lot of those infrastructure dollars and projects. And so I want to continue to be a big voice in that, too.
Nice. You are. You are. You're very involved in many different aspects of of the state and definitely the city of Centennial. For those of you just joining, thank you for popping on. If you want to follow along, go to Sweetland for Centennial dot com. We have Christine Sweetland here with us. And please, if you have questions or comments, throw them in the social media on Facebook, LinkedIn. We, that's why we're here, to help educate and inform. And for those of you that don't know if you're registered to vote or or want to get registered, you can actually go to Christine's website and register right there. Highly recommend definitely having a voice. I am such a component of, please having a voice.
I'm gonna, okay, so here's the figures that I, and I'm going to put on my glasses because I want to make sure I get them right. Okay, so in the twenty twenty four general election, which is presidential election in Centennial, eighty point three percent of people voted. Amazing, right? In the twenty twenty three municipal election, which is the one where I was reelected, forty five point two percent.
Less than half. That's
Right.
That's rough.
In the twenty twenty two general, which was when we elected right, we we reelected Governor Polis, I think that was on that election, sixty five percent of people voted. And in the twenty twenty one municipal, thirty nine point five percent.
That is so interesting.
Right? And and the municipal elections, I want to make sure I have those facts specifically. Municipal elections, they matter the most to you, right? These are, you know, the the streets that you drive on, making sure that you have a good, strong economy in the city that you live. Making sure you feel safe in the city that you live. And so the ballot will be mailed to you mid-October, like it always is. And you have until Tuesday, November fourth, before seven PM to drop it off or to mail it or to go in person and vote. It's the same exact, so if you were able to vote, if the eighty four percent of you were able to vote last year, I'm expecting you to vote this year as well.
Completely. I totally agree.
It's so important.
Have a voice.
And 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 especially because younger kids don't vote because they're like, it's municipal. I don't care. I only see the ads and the commercials. But here's the thing, and this is what I tell my kids and their friends, like, I'm going to be the decision maker for what this city looks like in twenty years. So don't you want me to have a say in the city where you're going to come back to and raise your children? Because I think that's really important.
I agree.
Yeah. So I really hope that we see a lot more voter turnout.
I do, too. That is what, I mean, that is my soapbox that I usually end up on in these interviews, no matter if it's a political interview or not. But it really is, is to have a voice. And like you said, like, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, we actually, we had an interview last night that also was on the political frame and we talked about safety. And I don't think it ever matters to me, what side of the aisle you're on, we all want to be safe. We want ourselves to be safe when we go to work and our kids when they go to school. We don't want to have anything happen. I mean, that is just, I hope that that can be, again, a conversation that we're embracing as human beings, that we care about one another, no matter what.
Centennial is one of the safest cities to live in. And it's really interesting because, you know, we are knocking on doors and calling people, asking them about what local issues matter to them. And people will say, I feel very safe, right? I I'm not worried about property crime. I am worried about when I get on the street, right? That people are driving too fast. And so we in Centennial, we partner with the Arapahoe County Sheriff's Office, they're our police force. And they do an amazing job for us. And a couple of years ago, we did increase our traffic patrol to two more officers out on the streets. Because we do want to make sure that every user on our roads, whether you're in a car, a bike, walking, that you have a safe way to get where you're going, especially for our kids, right? We want to make sure they have safe routes to school. So Dr. Cog gave us a grant at the city of Centennial. So we're actually partnering with both school districts, Littleton Public Schools and Cherry Creek to make sure that we're looking at those routes to school and making sure that kids know how to get there safely.
Well, we've definitely talked about safety. What are the the, I mean, I think you've you've answered this, but maybe to be more poignant about what made you want to go from city council to really run for mayor?
To run for mayor.
Is there something that kind of sparked in your mind to say, boy, I'm either really passionate about this? Or I see a need that needs to be fixed? What are some of those those issues that you have seen?
I I have really enjoyed being on city council and so, you know, I feel like I'm a servant leader. I work really well together. I love the collaboration. And so as mayor, I think we're a very well-run city. It's not like I'm coming in and saying, we need to change everything. However, I'm a small business owner and I know that we can uplift the small businesses in our community and probably do more in that space than we're doing today. You know, as we both know, being small business owners ourselves, that if if we do well, the city does well, right? And there are so many fun, unique places in Centennial to eat, shop and play. And we just need to highlight those. So that's one of the things that I want to do as mayor is really look at that. And then housing, oh, you know, as an appraiser, I see how expensive it is just throughout the metro area. And so I think I bring some unique perspective to the housing conversation. And so as mayor, we've done a lot of really good work in Centennial, but as mayor, I want to continue the work that we've already started. We need a pathway for homeownership, which we're really missing out on right now. And so I want to come come up with some innovative ideas to figure out how we can do a pathway to homeownership for folks. And then what I'm hearing from people is that those of us who have lived in this community for a really long time and we want to downsize, there's no place to go. And so I want to make sure that when we're talking about housing, we're really talking about a mix of housing for everyone. And especially for those who started our city and want to stay here. We know the grocery store, our friends are here, right? We have our favorite restaurant. So so the so the Mayor Pico's term limited. And and when I ran for reelection in twenty twenty three, with four names on the ballot, I got sixty four percent of the vote. But in my neighborhood, the people that know me best, I got eighty percent of the vote. And so that was kind of the catalyst to say, you know, the people that know me best know I want what's best for Centennial, whether they're Republican, independent or Democrat, they know that I want what's best for Centennial. And that's what led me to decide that I wanted to run for mayor.
Oh, I love that. Well, you had mentioned there are other other candidates, of course. And there but there's, there's, and I didn't, I honestly don't know them. I'll be totally frank. So there's Walter James Bennett Rutledge, am I saying that right? And then Donald Sheehan. So it's the three of you that are running. And I, Walter, independent, and I apologize for my, I don't know.
Yeah. So so city council races are non- Yeah. So, so city council races are nonpartisan. So there will be no designation
Thank you.
Next to anybody's name, uh, as it should be, because as I said, we don't reach across the aisle. We just sit next to each other. So, um, so Bennett Rutledge, he goes by Bennett. He has been a longtime resident in Centennial and, um, we just had a forum last night. Um, I'm not gonna, you know, tell you everything that he's running on, but one of his biggest issue is making sure that people have a choice on the ballot. He wants to make sure that there are no uncontested races. Um, and so that's why, and so I love the fact that he really enjoys the, you know, the, the, the race of putting himself out there and willing to do that. So yes, so he is running. And then Don Sheehan and I have both served together for the last six years. He lives on the east side of Centennial. I live more on the west side. Um, a very nice guy. You know, I think we have differing viewpoints. And you know, part of the things that I'm running on is, you know, as a mom, I know how expensive it is to raise kids in our city. As a small business owner, I know, you know, how, how scary it is, right? Not only to start a business, but to grow a business. So those are the things that I bring to the table. You know, and working collaboratively with everybody.
Yeah. No, I agree. No, thank you for making that point, um, completely. You know, you bring up so many things and it is, again, going back to being a native here in Colorado, you know, it is, it is getting expensive across the board. You know, everywhere in Colorado, we just see prices going up substantially. Um, I was curious if you have, if you wanted to go into a little more about the housing plan that you see. Cause the influx, and again, you were the expert in this field. There are so many people coming in. We're running out of space to put them.
Right.
So is this coming down to when it's, when it's more affordable housing? What does that look like? Where are they gonna go? Is this to decrease the cost of the building materials? So it's more affordable entry point? Like, what does that kind of look like?
Right. Well, and I think it's a combination of a lot of things, but supply is the biggest factor, right? And so I always say Centennial is a community of neighborhoods and we need more neighborhoods. So we have places that are underutilized right now, um, that we can start utilizing. And a perfect example is go up to Yosemite and Arapahoe Road and then go all the way down Yosemite to IKEA. And what you have there is a bunch of nineteen sixties office buildings. A lot of them are empty. And so we've rezoned that for mixed use and we're calling it Midtown Centennial. And so we've put a lot of, uh, time and effort into what do we want that to look like? Cause Centennial doesn't have a downtown, so it will be our downtown Centennial. It will be walking to light rail. It'll be walkable to coffee. So, um, really it'll be housing, it'll be employment centers, all of that together. So what we did, which is very unique for cities to do, is we actually, our planners went out and they designed what they wanted there. And then when we were talking about it, I said, well, Centennial is known for our parks and trails, so we need to put that on the map as well. So if we're gonna have walkable areas, we need to make sure our, our new neighborhoods look like our old neighborhoods do, right? So there needs to be parks and trail system. So that's now on the plan as well. And so now the development community knows exactly what we want in every single spot. So all they have to do is they have to come to us and say, okay, I'm ready and it's gonna be approved. So I'm really excited. Now, this is a twenty-year plan.
I was just gonna ask.
Like, don't, don't, don't think downtown Centennial is coming next year. It's not. I wish it was. It's, you know, uh, it takes a while to build things. But you bring up another really good point. It's, it's also like building materials, right? So the modular homes that they're building today are very different than what you think about a modular home is. And so we need to look at that. They actually do three D printed houses, which are kind of fascinating. I, I've never actually been inside one. I've just seen pictures of it. So there's ways that we can make things more affordable. And then what we did in Centennial, um, is we have, uh, now we have incentives for housing. We typically only did, um, incentives for new businesses coming in. But this year we added incentives for housing. And so one of the things I want to do as mayor is reach out to the development community and give it, you know, a few months and you go, okay, here's the incentives we came up with. Does this work? Does it match with what you need? Cause we gave you a menu list of items that we think should work. But if we're not having those conversations, then we, then we need to rethink what we, what we're, what we're offering, right? So I want to make sure that we're reaching out to the development community to make sure. And I will just say, I, I jokingly said this last night and I'm gonna say it again today. If you're a developer, Centennial is open for business, right? Like, come on by. And then, you know, we haven't even touched on the National Women's Soccer League coming here. Which I am so thrilled about. And, um, so I told you earlier to, that my husband and I met because of soccer. So for eighteen months, I was on, on, on an NDA. We couldn't talk about the soccer team coming to Centennial. My husband has coached soccer for twenty years. He now works for Colorado United Soccer. It's a recreation, uh, uh, soccer, club and a youth soccer club. Anyway, eighteen months, couldn't tell him. Finally, I'd, I'd like sprinkle, hey, did, have you looked to see the National Women's Soccer League? Uh, you guys should be following this. He came to the press conference and he told the, uh, the owners, he's like, eighteen months. Now I'm just wondering what else she hasn't told me.
That's impressive.
Yeah, yeah. But so their, their tr- state of the art training facilities will maintain in Centennial. Next March, they are kicking off in Centennial in a modular stadium. And then when Denver builds their permanent stadium, they'll move there. But then Cherry Creek Schools takes that over and then high school sports gets to be played there. So it's a great private-public partnership. But that area now is ripe for redevelopment as well. Not just housing, but also economic drivers. Yeah. So, so even though, you know, we're very landlocked in and it's not like we have a lot of green space. We can reimagine existing areas and places that, that we didn't think about before.
This is so exciting. I actually, I never heard the twenty-year plan before today. About having kind of a, a downtown feel. And I love the continuity that you're talking about, right? So it still has the charm and the eloquence that people love about Centennial. To still have the, the parks and the recreation. I'm so excited to watch where that goes. And of course the soccer stadium, I, my personal tie, of course, I didn't do soccer. I was more lacrosse, but I went to Cherry Creek High School. And so to watch that blend, right? And you talk a lot about collaboration and partnership and I, I'm with you on that a hundred percent. That you have the private and public sectors coming together to make your city so much better and bring in more people, right? And it's to have the entire economy. I like that we are talking about it all as a whole, because it really is all encompassing. Right? And again, to go back to the granular, this is where we work. This is where we live. And we drive every day. I mean, I know where every pothole is on every street that needs to be fixed. And I would love a downtown, you know, where I grew up and it was up north, but we didn't have a downtown. And you know, as we discussed off air, I'm like, you, we need a downtown.
Right.
Because it brings people together. So I'm really excited to see where that goes. And we all care. Again, this, I love that it's not really a political debate. I mean, everyone should be thinking, safety, schools, where do I work? How much income? And do I have affordable housing? Right? Like, that is just
Right.
Constantly. I'm glad that you are, you're so active again in the community. To me, that speaks to me just more as woman to woman, person to person of what you're doing in, in the city. Is you are having these conversations and getting people's opinions and having that candid conversation of what do you want next door?
Right.
You know, how can you feel safer? Or how is the, the, your property taxes doing? You know, these are all, and they do affect us. And sometimes I feel like I'm gonna be on my soapbox, that we get a little too nationalized, right? That we are so glued to, yes, there is importance with that. And to really care about where we are, ninety-nine percent of our lives
Right.
Is where we live.
Exactly. And you know, to your point about potholes, like potholes aren't blue, they're not red. They just need to be fixed. And, and I'm gonna tell you this, uh, you, in Centennial, we have a My Centennial app. If you send us a picture or just tell us the street that the pothole is on, within twenty-four hours, we will fix that. We will fix that pothole and it becomes a cost of living issue, right? Because if we fix that pothole, you, if we don't fix that pothole, then you might blow a tire. You might need a new alignment. That becomes a cost of living issue for you. So we will fix that pothole within twenty-four hours. You just, you just have to tell us where it is and we're out there fixing it.
Oh, my gosh. I did not know this within twenty-four hours. That is incredible.
Right. Now, and I, I want everybody, like, we, we brag about this. So, so test me on it. I'm, maybe not on Saturday and Sunday, right? Cause our crews, but, um, we had a Public Works barbecue and, uh, and I sat with the, the A-team. They're the asphalt team. And, uh, and we were talking about it. They're very proud of the work that they do and the work that they do in our city. A couple of them actually live in Centennial and it was great having lunch with them. But yeah, the A-team will fix that pothole.
Is that across the state or is this a Centennial?
It has to be a Centennial road, right? So some of the roads are, um, C-dot, you know, like universities actually, uh, Colorado Department of Transportation Road. So it has to be a Centennial road. Um, so your neighborhood streets and things like that. And the My Centennial app, uh, that, it has a reported problem. It also has all kinds of great information. You can download it for your Apple or Android. So I, if you haven't already downloaded it, I highly encourage you to do that.
That is amazing. Okay. Well, people who live, I know our, our biggest following and, and listenership is here in Centennial. So I learned a whole bunch about Centennial. Look for the blue. Like, I'm, I'm even sporting the blue today. So think blue Centennial. So when you see the blue street signs, you're legitimately in Centennial. And My Centennial app, I never knew that either, to go on and, and report a pothole. And if they have twenty-four hours and they're gonna fix it. Can we make that a Colorado thing?
You know,
That would be lovely.
I'm just gonna say, Centennial is a very well-managed city. There are, our, our staff works really hard on your behalf every single day. Your tax dollars are being very well-spent and, um, and they're very proud of the work that they do. So I, I wish that every other city and, uh, state and, and nation were, was as well-managed as Centennial. We're very fortunate. Yes.
It's been wonderful truly to live here and to, to get to know people, you know, in not only the community, but on city council. You know, it's been such a pleasure because it feels like you all have such a gel when you all work together. There's this open communication and kind of that collaboration and the ultimate goal, right, is to make Centennial as best as it can be.
Right.
Which is amazing. I think in some different cities, that's not always the case. But Centennial really has that amazing feel to it.
Right.
So it is, it's fun to work here, fun to live here. I'm now officially a resident of Centennial, which is amazing.
That is amazing.
Four-ish months in.
We love that.
I, I've, it's been a long time coming. So, and it's everything that you're talking about. You know, it's the kids, it's the family, it's the, I have a, a neighbor kid that's mowing my lawn.
Right.
And I know all these kids. They actually come over and borrow tools, you know, like, that's the type of place Centennial is.
I, okay. So I, I gave you one of my friendship bracelets this weekend. So this is, uh, there's a little disc. It's a three D printed. And this weekend I said, oh, this kid in my neighborhood makes them for me. And he's like, oh, that's so cool. Like, how old is the kid? I'm like, well, he's really not a kid anymore, cause he's actually a graduate student at the school of mines. He's an electrical engineer. But I've known him since he was nine years old. So I still, but it, it, that's the great thing about Centennial is people stay here. And so watching my kids and their friends grow up and to become these, you know, um, these young adults and figuring out where they want to go in life. And a lot of them are back in Centennial because they can't afford, um, to, to rent somewhere else. And so they're back in Centennial. Um, and it is, it's really great to watch that progression. And I'll just say, like, the kid that's, that's mowing your, your yard today, like, it's gonna be fun to watch him go. And then what's really nice is then your kiddo has somebody to, uh, to look up to. And at some point, we'll be the one mowing the, the yard and things like that. And that's, that sense of community, that's why I love living here.
I do too. I'm a, I hundred percent agree with it. I know, we tried to cover a whole bunch. I always feel like I need more time.
Right. You know, are we running, cause I have to mention my neighbor,
You have
Jay Green and Brake Signals, cause you have had Brake Signals on your station. They are an amazing group. And these are those things in Centennial that we just don't even know are here, right? So Brake Signals is a bunch of guys that, most of them live in my neighborhood, that got together and started playing. And, and I highly recommend you go listen to them, that wherever they're playing next, follow them. But it's stations like yours that, that feature these Colorado musicians that give them a voice. And how lucky are we that you are based in Centennial and doing that?
It's amazing. Well, our president Joshua came up with this a couple of years ago. And I loved it because it is so focused on community and to give people the platform where they never would have had it before. We love Brake Signals. We of course have a bunch of their music in our rotation. You're so dear to, to mention them. Seeing them perform live and that is truly like what I agree with completely about you and about our Centennial, about our state. Is it is so community oriented and we help support each other. And again, I never, it's so interesting unless you, we're in an interview. I'm like, I never really think on the political, are you red or blue? I love that you said potholes aren't, aren't red or blue.
They're not. Yes. Yeah.
Same thing across the board.
Right.
Um, I'm gonna use my dad's phrase because this has stayed with me for so many years. If we all do a little lifting, our world would be a better place. No matter what. If someone, just go open the door for someone today or reach out your hand or ask them how they're doing today. It can go a long ways. Cause we have no idea what another person is going through. I have to tell myself, especially when I'm in a hurry, let the person get in front of me.
Right.
Cause I have no idea what day that they are having.
Right.
So it's again, the community aspect.
Exactly. And that's, you know, and that's why I want to be mayor is that I think I can make the community just a little bit better, uh, for the people who live here. And I hope that on Tuesday, November fourth, the people in Centennial agree with that and, and vote for me. But you know, really, we just, we need people to vote. Like, we need people to really understand how important local elections are. And I will say at the local level, we don't, we don't fundraise the money that we're not gonna do ads on TV and things like that. Call me. Like, if you have a question about where I stand on something, you know, my number, my emails on my website, I'm happy to talk to anybody. I don't, I, I was door knocking yesterday. There's a gentleman that he didn't agree with something that I, 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 I want to have changed. And you know, we can be respectful and disagree. I don't know if he'll vote for me or not, but I'm willing to listen to him and understand why he doesn't see it the way that I do. That's okay. But we, we, if we can make every, just our corner of the community a little bit better, then I should do that. You know, that's why I want to be mayor.
Completely.
Yeah.
Well, I so appreciate you coming on.
This has been so fun.
Yeah. Oh, I love it. I get to sit on, I mean, I have the best job in the entire world. Is I get to have, yeah, people like you come in and I get so educated and know what's going on in our backyard essentially, which is so important.
Yeah.
I totally agree. Please go out and vote. Um, I'm not gonna tell you who to vote for, but please go out and vote. Um, this is where your kids go to school. That's where you work. It's where you live. And truly, you spend most of your life where, right where you are. So it is so important. Again, so it's November fourth.
Tuesday, November fourth by seven PM. Yes. Yeah. And it's all the drop-off boxes. Wherever you dropped off your ballot last year, you can drop off this year. If you prefer to vote in person, those will be open. But mid-October, uh, is when ballots will start being mailed out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds great. Anything that you wanted to make sure we touched on?
You know, um, I just, I really appreciate the time. I'm gonna end with my vision for Centennial as mayor. I want to see, uh, Centennial being a safe city where neighborhoods matter. Businesses are valued and we create unique spaces for all to enjoy. And if I become mayor, I hope that becomes a reality. So I really do appreciate you guys having me on.
Oh, of course. It's been, it's been wonderful. And for those of you again that did join late, um, this is gonna be on Facebook for a full month. And it's forever on YouTube and forever on LinkedIn as well. Um, so definitely go back. And it's, it's so worth just hearing about what's going on in Centennial. Again, you can go to Sweetland for, it's F O R Centennial dot com. And what's great about her website, not only do you get to know about her, her issues, endorsements, what she's doing in the community, but there's also a spot for you to register to vote. So no excuses.
That's right. And you can see my very cute, handsome family.
Exactly. Like, know, know what's going on in your city. I mean, it's so important. Like, I just want to stress that so badly. I know we all care about the big global things, which we absolutely should, and also care about what's going on for local. Um, so again, Sweetland for Centennial dot com and you can contact her there and definitely ask questions. You know, I love that you're so open about that, because there are a lot of things I don't understand.
Right.
Or who owns what? And I learned about the High Line Canal. I had no idea about all of that. So.
And it's such a huge amenity for us.
Completely. It's a wonderful asset for Colorado. It's incredible. Christine, we adore you.
Oh, thank you so much. Yeah. I can't wait to see you at the next thing. Oh, thank you so much. Yeah. I can't wait to see you at the next thing.
I know, I know. Well, I know, we're all so busy out in the world all the time, and that's what we have to do, right?
Yes.
It's amazing. Well, thank you again for everyone tuning in, for listening and for watching on K4CO Radio. We are super excited. We do celebrate our two-year anniversary and right next to twenty-fifth anniversary for wedding anniversary for Ms. Christine. Um, so all day on Thursday of this week, which is the twenty-fifth, and all day on Friday, the twenty-sixth, we will playing, be playing only Colorado musicians all day, um, which is pretty amazing. So definitely, again, this is our local world here in Colorado. So if you can listen in, that would be absolutely great to help support these incredible musicians. And please feel free to reach out if you'd like any more information about Christine. Again, it's Christine, excuse me, SweetlandforCentennial.com. I hope you all enjoy your wonderful Tuesday. You all take care.